With that, I'm going to call the meeting to order and this is the regular council meeting of Minnetrista for April 6th. Our first order will be to rise and would you all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome. I'll make some brief introductions here. I'm Lisa Whalen. I'm the mayor. Next to me is council members Patricia Thole, Mark Vanderlinde, Pam Mortensen, Bob Christians, and next to Bob is our city engineer, Paul Hornby. On my right is our city administrator, Mike Barone, our finance director, Brian Grimm, our community development director, David Abel, our attorney, Ron Beatty, and on the end, our chief of police, Paul Falls. Also in the audience this evening is, with us, our staff is Gary Peters. And then we have a brand-new city clerk, Kristi Lindquist. And so, Chris, I think you go by, thank you. With that, our first order is to approve the agenda. I would like to, well, Solarstone, I believe they're under special persons presentation. So, okay, alright. So, approving the agenda, are there any changes then? Additions? I don't believe there are. So with that, is there a motion to approve as presented?
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, motion passes. So next, we have persons to be heard, however, there is nobody signed up except for our special presentation this evening, solar energy from Solarstone. So if you would like to come and do your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Is this on?
It may not be.
You do your best. I'll try to project. So, Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for this opportunity to present to you tonight. In full disclosure, I've been on the other side of the DS in a neighboring community, so I'm well aware of the protocol and so forth, so I'll be making sure that this presentation is informational. And I'm also here tonight with my partner, Joe DeVito, so if there's other questions that I can't answer, he can handle that too. And I'm also acutely aware that I'm on the shot clock because between you all and everyone else in here in the final four, so I'll move this along as quickly as possible.
We forgot to tell you, there's a trap door if you go over your time frame.
Well, at least it's not the antler of a safe from the ceiling, right? So I've got about 14 slides here that I'm gonna go through, so this isn't depth by PowerPoint. From an agenda standpoint, I always kinda like to just lay out pretty good the roadmap is that we'll be talking, that I'll be talking about tonight. Boy, this thing is still, you put, there it goes. Anyway, so just a little bit about us, there's some things going on with solar energy legislation to bring you up to speed on that. What is a solar garden? How solar works? Usage analysis that we do, the benefits, and sequence of events and questions and answers. So when I get to sequence of events, you can go. He's almost done. A little bit about us, we are a solar-based development company and we are headquartered here in Minneapolis. We've got about 25 years of experience both internationally and domestic in development. During that period of time, we've developed over 3,000 megawatts of power and that is in solar, wind, and hydro. And during that same period of time, we've developed and managed about 750,000 acres of that same renewable energy categories. And today, in Minnesota, we control about 2,000 acres. So we've got about 18 projects currently that we have under our control and shortly here, I believe this week, maybe next week, we have five of those locations that are in Wright County, Dakota, Rice, Goodhue, and Dodge. So we will be submitting those and applications into Excel. The other thing is, we have what we consider to be really unique relationship, alliance partnership with WSB that is working with us doing the engineering, permitting, construction over services and so forth. From a legislative standpoint, in 2013, the state enacted the community solar program to significantly increase the production of clean energy. The blueprint for that is that public utilities, in this case, it's Excel, must dedicate a minimum of 1.5 percent of their solar energy production to the grid. So that's about 450 megawatts. The interesting thing that's unique about Minnesota, Excel also has territory in Colorado, so the solar garden program exists there as well. But the one thing that's unique about Minnesota is there's no cap on the number of installations, solar garden installations that can be put into the state. Each solar garden has a nameplate maximum energy capacity of 1 megawatt. We can also not put on more than five subscribers onto any solar garden and no one subscriber can control more than 40 percent of that. So if we have a subscriber that's doing more than 400,000 megawatts on one of those, we can move them over to, or 400,000 kilowatts, we can move them over to another site. So we have the ability to be able to administer that and move them around depending on what their total usage is. But the reason for that is they are shared, so they don't want any, the state didn't want anybody coming in and monopolizing solar gardens completely so we can use them for other subscribers and in maybe some cases, at some point, residents. The other unique thing is, which I think is sometimes a misconception, by the way, this just kicked off in December, so it's been just a little over 90 days. So some of what we're going out to do is talk to people because there's some confusion out there. But the solar garden does not have to be physically located on the site. It can be in the county or it can be in a adjacent county, but you can participate in that without having to have it onsite. The last thing is, which just recently came up at the Capitol, there is a bill circulating right now where they are looking to increase renewable energy initiatives to 40 percent by 2030. Part of that is around the fact that in 2006, they started the wind energy programs down in the southeast and the goal for that was 25 percent renewable energy from wind generation by 2025. We're already today at 19 percent. So I think that with the solar initiatives here, I think they're probably starting to look at the fact that that goal is gonna be easily achieved and can we push the needle on that even further? Whoops. Well, this thing is touchy. Just to kinda give you an idea of the programs around the United States and what it looks like today, in the light blue, yellow, and the green, those are states that have, there's about 23 of them, that have some type of renewable energy programs going on. The ones that are in yellow, which is Minnesota, and Washington State has both actually, is where they have enacted legislation for renewable energy. There's 14 states that fall into that category. So, and Minnesota has taken a lot of attention at this point just because of the limit, not having the limit on installed solar installations. So that's kinda what it looks like on a national basis. I think one of the things that we find too is because the program is so new, there's still some confusion out there. So I'd like to kinda start with, let's talk about what a solar garden is not. And it is not a residential installation, so it is not a rooftop application at all. Obviously, those exist out there, but that's not what our program is. It's a decentralized solar energy production that's generated completely off-site. We distribute directly into the utility itself, right into the power grid. We require on average about five acres to generate 1 megawatt of power. And the unique thing that we have too is the ability to be either able to subscribe to the garden or host a garden, or both. This just kinda gives you an overview of what it looks like from about 1,000 feet, just to give you some perspective on that. On the right-hand side there, that's probably pretty close to two acres there on the right-hand How solar works, this diagram here, illustration, I can show you that the sun rays hit the solar panels and those photons then are converted to DC energy. And that DC energy then goes to onsite inverters and those inverters then convert that to AC. Then we also have virtual metering capabilities onsite that actually measure the production, solar production that we're doing. So we monitor that as well as Excel. And then that electricity gets distributed directly to the grid. Framework for it, as I mentioned before, we are generating that solar energy, it's going directly to the public utility. Then the customer, there is no interruption in their service, we're not asking them to unplug from one source and plug it to another. So the only thing that really changes in this framework is with what is produced at the solar garden for what they subscribe for, they would get bill credits that would come to them and for their billing. And then we, the customer buys the solar energy from us, they sign a contract with us, and the billing for that comes directly from us. Just gonna take you through a quick usage analysis. One of the first things that we do if we're given the opportunity is to come in and analyze the usage and your costs that you currently have today. So the first thing, this one happens to be for a northern metro, first ring suburb that we recently did a usage analysis for them. I can't divulge who that is right now because they haven't given us permission to do that, but their annual rate was about 1.1 megawatts of power. Their annual bill credit represented about $137,000 on an annual basis and their subscription payment to us would be about 137. Their annual savings, we are, these are just estimates again based on Excel's increases in their tariff rates, but we're looking at about $7,300 for that. And then over a 25-year period of time, that represents about $565,000 in savings for them. Moving on to the benefits, what we are seeing right now with some of the analysis that we're doing is that we can save a subscriber anywhere from 5 to 10 percent on an annual basis. The subscription rates that we require for our contracts is a 25-year horizon with a fixed rate and an accelerator associated with that. What we have typically seen in the last 10 to 12 years from Excel is anywhere from a 2 to 4 percent increase. You may have seen here recently, they just got approved by the PUC for a 6.1 percent increase. There are some things I think that are probably impacting them with that. I won't go into details in that tonight, but there are some things with their infrastructure and so forth and some cost overruns that they have with the nuclear plant. As I mentioned before, a subscriber, nothing changes with their energy distribution, it remains stable, same way they were receiving it before. There's no upfront capital of operating expenses, we bear all of that. It costs us about $2.5 million on average to put a solar garden in. And it's also a great opportunity to be able to participate in the solarization of Minnesota. Hosting benefits, from a city standpoint, if you decided that you had land that was available, you have the dual benefits. You have the benefits of being a subscriber as well as hosting. Again, there's no capital-intensive expenditures there, there's no ROI returns that you would typically have to do. There's also opportunities to generate revenue streams. So we're looking for unproductive land, there's a couple, there's three cities right now that we're working with, with decommissioned wastewater treatment facilities. So there's another one up in Sherburne County that they're looking at for a capped landfill. So there are areas that we can use to repurpose and make them productive again. Can also capture recurring lease income. We pay lease payments for that, for that property. And then last is the tax revenue for solar energy production. So the way the state has set that up is the county would get 80 percent of that tax revenue and the cities would get 20 percent. Just touching just quickly here on some solar ordinances, you as a city may be farther ahead than others are with that. I'm, we're, I'm just trying to show you tonight some of the things that we're seeing out there, not trying to dictate whether you should or shouldn't do that. But obviously rooftop applications, we think you're gonna see, continue to see increases in that based on cost of that or declining for residents. One thing to keep in mind, 25 percent of all homes are only suitable for solar generation and that has to do with orientation to the sun, shading, and even the roof pitch. So not all homes would be applicable for that. And then also, and probably more importantly, investment today is typically somewhere around $25,000 to $30,000 to put one on your roof. From a strategic planning standpoint, I think you would probably start to anticipate the advent of neighborhood activity and residents coming in and interested in putting rooftop. By the way, we're agnostic about that. We don't have a preference one way or the other. We think there's plenty of applications for rooftop as well as what we do. I'm just trying to bring up a couple of points here as far as some things that we have seen. And there's probably even gonna be challenges with the rooftop ordinances you put in place anyway. And one of the hurdles that we've seen and they've already experienced out in California is those residential customers are coming in and putting that in and financing that solar configuration on their roof when they get ready to sell their home. They're having challenges with the buyer and wanting to take, in some cases, responsibility for that long-term debt for that. Last on this point is, we think it can provide a dual option for you. The rooftop applications, obviously, if they work and they work for the residents and they work for the neighborhood, all the better. But I think also with shared community solar, I think that gives the communities another option that they could provide to the residents as well. And when I mention that, it really, if the city decided that they wanted to participate as a subscriber, it really puts the city in a leadership position. So when you do have issues where someone's coming in and wants and is interested in putting up rooftop, they could actually be a subscriber as well and they would get all the benefits that any other subscriber would get without having the infrastructure And then sequence of events, like I mentioned earlier, we typically come in and do 12-month history of the energy consumption and do a value analysis on that. We also have a subscriber agreement that obviously would wanna be reviewed by the finance people as well as legal. And then we take, once that's been approved, we take and submit that solar application to Excel. From a site hosting standpoint, steps there are pretty simple. We review all the available land sites, review the lease contract, and also, whoops, and also what those lease incomes and land rents would be. So in closing, just key takeaways, it's an opportunity to participate in a green energy revolution, delivers fixed long-term energy savings, produces clean renewable energy, and also has the ability to improve quality of life. So with that, I'll open it up if there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions, council?
What is the life of one of these solar gardens? Is it like a 20-year contract or?
Yeah, typically what we do, it's a 25-year contract from a subscription standpoint and there is 25-year warranties on all the equipment. So what we typically look for on the land side is 30 years for that, but it's a feasibility play for us. We're putting the 2.5 in, so that's the kind of linked contract that we need for the return on that.
You know, as technology advances, I would say something that big within a, probably a pretty short number of years, is gonna probably decrease like computers have. What do you do when you have those big units and now others, you have smaller things available to other customers and we'd be held to a 30-year contract?
Well, I think if I understand your question right, you're concerned about the technology for that outstripping the size that we would need for that?
Yeah, well, if, as technology grows, do you change it so that we aren't living with those big things when they aren't necessary for that long?
Yeah, there's, there's already some initiatives going on, there's some things that are probably gonna be happening, I wouldn't make any promises about it because, you know, beta, VHS, I mean, you know, who knows what direction that's gonna go. But I think what you're probably gonna see is the efficiencies for the panels themselves will get much better. And the example I would give you, because I was in the wireless business when it first came up, we were all on analog and we were coming out and asking every city to put a cell tower up. And basically, at that time, all we could deliver was voice and voicemail. And what we quickly began to realize was, as we continued to grow the system and put more on, and then we started moving from mobile to portable, and we didn't have people that were passing through the network any longer, they were camped out sitting there. Well, we knew that we didn't have any prayer of coming back into cities and going, "Give us three more sites, we need to put three more sites up." So what was developed at that time was a product called TDMA, which is digital. And we were able to triple the capacity in the cell sites by just simply swapping out the radios. So, and all the features that you have today that you enjoy is because of the digital technology that's out there today, which is far, well, the smartphones are supposed to make us smart, right? So I would guess that we probably would see that as far as getting more, and I think the usage is gonna go up. So I think instead of us going out and trying to get more land, we should be able to maximize what we already have today. The other thing that's coming along too is battery technology. And I was selling these at one point and they were as big as a horse's leg and the batteries, I think I had three or four that I had to plug in all the time. So, you know, today, the batteries have gotten smaller. I think the ones that we're looking at from an energy standpoint, storage is gonna be a big deal. And being able to store that energy in addition to, which, you know, everyone has their own opinion on this, but I think electric cars are also gonna be coming along at some point too. And once the cost of those start to come down, I think you'll see more of that too. So there's gonna be more things, I think, that are gonna be drawing energy from that.
You know, at the beginning, at the beginning, you had said that this one community in the northern suburbs would save somewhere around $7,000. Well, how large is that community?
Oh, gosh. I don't know the size of that. It's much larger than Minnetrista, I know. But I would say that that city is probably 30,000 to 40,000.
Do the panels generate any noise?
You know, the only thing that does, that's a good question. The only thing that does generate noise are the inverters that are on there. So there may be when the electrons are excited inside the panels, there may be a little buzzing that goes on there. But for the most part, if you heard anything, it would be the inverters, but that's just a very low hum.
Well, I don't think we're gonna take any action this evening. If the council is interested, I would suggest that we bring this back for more detailed, in-depth discussion with the council, maybe at a work session, if you'd like to explore it a little bit more. I think it's very interesting, very good concept.
Great.
So should we maybe do that? Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much and we'll talk about it at a future work session then.
Great, thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we have an introduction of Kristin Lindquist. I believe, Mr. Barone?
Yes, yes, Mayor. And Krist, if you wanna, I know you have a microphone there, but we're gonna put you in front of the podium. Most people have met Krist that are on the city council, but I will introduce her formally. This is Kristin Lindquist. Krist is the new city clerk. She began her duties on March 23rd. She comes to us with quite a bit of experience. She has over 25 years of experience in the public sector. Most recently, she was at the city of Des Plaines, Illinois. I think it's a community of about around 60,000 people, somewhere in that neighborhood, as the deputy city clerk for that municipality. She's also worked here in the state, a number of locations, the most recent two before she was in Des Plaines were the city of Coon Rapids as their deputy city clerk and also up at the city of Rockford. She's obtained her certified Minnesota municipal clerk designation and also just a few years ago received her certified municipal clerk designation, which comes from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And as an aside, Krist is originally from Mound, Minnesota and went to high school at Westonka High School. So she's coming home after coming here from Illinois, we're glad she's here.
And welcome. Would you like to say something?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to thank you for appointing me to the city clerk position. This has given me the opportunity to come back to where I grew up. I'm very fond of this area and will do my best to help the city move forward in the future.
Thank you. And again, welcome and we're glad you're aboard.
Thank you.
So next, we have our consent agenda items. I'll read them quickly. There is a lengthy list. Is there anything anybody wants to remove from the consent agenda? Otherwise, I will read it. Consent agenda items consist of approving our regular meeting minutes from March 16th, approving our special meeting minutes from March 16th, approving our special meeting minutes from March 31st, approve special meeting minutes from April 1st, resolution number 51 approving claims, resolution number 52 approving a site plan review, application from Northern Natural Gas Company to remove and replace the existing structure and update piping onsite at 8210 State Highway 7, County Road 2, Highway Service Business, PID, et cetera. Resolution number 53 approving advantage property maintenance for 2015 through 2017 our lawn mowing, our lawn mowing and mowing related services. Item number H is resolution number 54 approving True Green for 2015 through 2017 for lawn fertilization and weed control services. Number I, resolution number 55 approving Sterling Fence for fall protection, not fall, but safety protection along retaining wall at Jean Lehner Park in the Trillium Bay neighborhood. Number J is resolution number 56 approving carefree services for 2015 street sweeping services. And a resolution number 59, change order number one for the GM Contracting Incorporated for County Road 151 and County Road 19, trunk water main improvements in the amount of And the last one, number I, is resolution number 60, accepting project and approve final payment to GM Contracting Incorporated for County Road 151 and County Road 19, trunk water main improvements. Any questions? Mr. Hornby?
Madam Mayor and members of council, one item on, the last item on the consent is that we did find with the spring thaw, that there's a couple of minor items we'd like to have taken care of by the contractors, so.
We will remove item I then.
I appreciate if you left it on and then what I would do is we would not release the check until those items are done satisfactorily.
Is that okay with?
That's fine.
I just wanna make sure the check doesn't inadvertently get sent out then?
It won't.
Okay. Alright. Alright. With that then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion to approve and second it, consent agenda items A through I. Okay, motion to approve and second it, consent agenda items A through I. Any further discussion?
A through L.
Is it L? Okay, sorry, A through L. It was lengthy. That's all I know.
It's on the other page.
It's on the other page. All right. All those in favor signify with aye. Aye. All those opposed. So we have no public hearings this evening. Our next, we'll move on to business items. Business items, um, first one is the concept sketch plan review and application from the Mater Family Trust to develop 10 lots and a wetland bank on the property located at 8,000 County Road 110 West. It's zoned AP Agricultural Preserve and I won't list the PID number. I believe that's Mr. Abel.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Um, just to give you a brief overview on the history and how we got to this point with this process. Back in September of 2014, uh, the Mater Family Trust, uh, entered into a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the city of Minatrista and the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District. The idea, uh, at the time was, uh, the Mater Family Trust was looking at, uh, all viable options, uh, for the future of this property that they own. One, from an environmental and open space standpoint, and then secondly, uh, from an economic standpoint, to see what the future potential could be from a subdivision standpoint. So with that MOU, the watershed district and the city worked with the trust on getting to where they are today. Uh, the watershed district more specifically, um, working on the feasibility of a wetland bank opportunity for the site. And then, um, the watershed district actually having a consultant work with the family and the city in developing this sketch plan, um, that's come before you this evening. So just a, a brief review on what a sketch plan is. A sketch plan, again, is the initial presentation, uh, that gives the applicant's intention on what they plan on doing with the property. Gives you as a city council, our planning commission, our parks commission, an opportunity to give, uh, non-binding feedback to applicants before they take that next step, that, uh, the next step being preliminary plat where really, uh, serious dollars in investment needs to be given in terms of development plans. So there is no formal approval that council will be giving tonight. Listed throughout your staff report, there are suggested changes or recommendations if they should move forward to that next step. Um, the idea again tonight for you as a council is, uh, be open with the applicants. Give them, uh, an idea as to what your intention might be if they did move to that next step, uh, with the, the sketch plan. So with that, what, what we're looking at, this is the site, again, 8,000 County Road 110 West, located just, uh, across the street west of City Hall. Uh, just under 80 acres, uh, of, of land that is there. And again, they, what they're proposing to do is a 10-lot subdivision. Uh, as the mayor mentioned earlier, their parcel is zoned ag preserve. Uh, that has the minimum of one unit, uh, with, of 40 acres of land. We do have the cluster development option in our ordinance, uh, which states any property that is east of County Road 92 and it's zoned agricultural preserve, um, you have the option to ask the council, uh, to, to rezone that to agriculture and then do what's called a cluster development. You can, uh, as long as you, um, have at least 50% open space with the site, you can essentially, what we allow you to do in our ordinance is have lots that are less than 10 acres in size. These lots, they're, they're anywhere from 2.8 to 4.7 acres in, in size. And again, they'd have a total of 10 lots. Uh, you can see in the bottom right, um, as part of their proposal, their, uh, their intent is to preserve and keep the original family farm and the home that is there and on the site. So there is, is a separate lot in the bottom right and then the additional lots, um, that they're proposing to create on the site. To the north, um, this is the area in which, um, they're looking at, uh, producing a wetland bank. There's, uh, strong, uh, reason to believe that at one time, these were wetlands. There's enough preliminary analysis that's been done with the soils to know that there, that it was at one time wetland. And, uh, it'd be, uh, fairly easy for them, uh, to turn that back into wetland. And that then, uh, so the wetland area that they're looking at is approximately 22 acres. And then the area, um, outside of that, it would be then what would be considered the open space for the site as part of the cluster, uh, development. We did send the proposal out, uh, to, uh, Hennepin County for review because of the access point that's being proposed, uh, down here. There is a current driveway, um, that accesses the, the original, uh, home, the homestead on the site. But, uh, as our city engineer and staff suspected with the increase of, of lots, the county was likely not gonna be favorable, um, to, to that access point. There is not good, uh, sightline distances. It's on a hill, it's on a curve. Um, so the comment, uh, received from the county was, um, to eliminate this access point, you would either, you'd have two options. You'd either go north up to Northview and Northview does, uh, connect down here to County Road 110. Or the other option that could, uh, be considered would be to move that intersection down, uh, to Windridge Trail. Because, uh, sightlines are better there. Of course, that does shift around their, their plat. So there are two options though that they could look at pursuing, which are noted, uh, in the staff report if they were to move forward to, uh, the preliminary plat stage, uh, that, that access point. Again, there, there are two options, head north to Northview or down to Windridge Trail. And that, that does bring up a, a question that I think this is a, um, prime opportunity for you as council to give feedback, uh, to the Mater Family Trust. One of the questions that's been posed to staff was, let's say they do reroute this to the north up to Northview Drive. Um, Northview is currently a gravel road. So the question, uh, of course, the internal road of this development will be a paved rural road. Uh, the question that was posed to staff is what, what would then happen to, to Northview? Would they be required to, um, turn that gravel road into an improved asphalt surface? And I said, you know, that's, that's a very good question. It's, it, it would be up to the council at the time of a review of a plat. So I think that's, uh, no need to speak for the Mater Family, but I think one of the big questions, um, that I, that has come up throughout my, uh, meetings and dealings with them, if council could weigh in on that. The only other item I'll, I'll mention is they, they did, um, just recently, uh, today actually, submit the, uh, scoping, uh, application to create the wetland bank. So there, there are two, there are separate tracks here. The subdivision itself, um, i- is a process and an application. And then the establishment of the wetland bank is a separate, uh, whack-up permit, essentially is what it's referred to as. Um, so they have, uh, put that, that process in motion. The two do not have to run, uh, coincide with one another. They can be done, uh, completely separate. Um, it does take, there's a number of steps that you have to go through in order to create a wetland bank and there's, uh, it takes time to establish them as well. So, um, they, they have gone ahead and, and started that process with, uh, again, uh, working with the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and city staff to, to get through that process. I, I should mention the, um, the watershed district and the city are certainly very excited about this opportunity with the wetland bank, uh, process. Uh, I'll let Courtney from the watershed district speak a little bit more to that. She is in the audience this evening. They're, they're really are looking forward to this. This will be the first actual wetland bank in MCWD's district. Um, so currently, they, they don't have any. So if you're affecting wetlands in the, the Minnehaha Creek Watershed District and you have to buy credits, you're buying credits from somewhere else that is not inside their district. So they're certainly looking forward to having an actual bank that is in their district. So when people need to buy credits, they are buying it within that same district. So certainly some excitement, um, from, from the watershed district on this process and how this whole process has gone. The Mater Family Trust is in the audience as well, if you have any questions of them. Um, staffs, uh, as staff has outlined in the, the report, there are a number of suggestions and changes that if it were to move to the next step, that we would suggest the family consider. And then anything that you as a council want to suggest to them tonight is also a direction that they can take. But again, non-binding feedback that you're giving them this evening. So with that, I'll, uh, turn it back to council for questions and/or let Courtney from the watershed district take over from here.
Questions? So do you wanna hear from Courtney first?
Courtney first.
Yep. Courtney, come in.
Mayor Whalen, council members, city staff, thank you for having me here today. It's been a real pleasure working with David at the city and with the Mater Family and this partnership. Um, and it's really resulted in a great project. Uh, the project would result in 42 acres of restored wetlands and uplands, 10 subplot, or 10-lot subdivision and the best, uh, return on investment for the landowners. And like David mentioned, for the watershed district, we're gonna be able to have the first wetland bank within our boundaries. So right now, all the, all the wetlands that are impacted within our district are lost to other areas. So we are losing the function and the value of those areas within our watershed. And this project also really highlights the Minnehaha Creek's watershed, watershed district's new way of doing business. And that's forming partnerships with our cities and other stakeholders to align our goals and authorities. And this really shows, this project especially, really shows how, um, you can get the best result for the built-in and natural environment.
Any questions? I think it's exciting to see that we might have some actual wetland banks here in Minatrista, so.
Well, Courtney, could you address, um, uh, I happen to be the council representative for the planning commission meeting where this was presented. And, uh, to me, I, it just seems like a win-win-win. A win for the city, a win for the Mater Family and a win for, uh, the wetlands or the Minnehaha Creek. One of the most exciting things that I heard when you presented was that this, well, the, the restoration process, you were saying, Mr. Abel, that it, it takes about, I think it's approximately five years.
Yep.
And this has the possibility of actually improving the health of Halsted Bay.
Yeah.
Correct? Could you speak to that a little bit more?
Yeah, right now, the wetland is ditched. And so all of the water from the farmland will, just runs into the ditch and runs off and doesn't really get treated before entering Halsted. But with the wetland restoration, wetlands function to clean water. And so this wetland, 22 acres of it, would go towards improving the quality of the, of Halsted, but.
Did you do a, um, analysis in terms of how many, uh, pounds of phosphorus will it clean or filter every year?
We did not, no.
Okay. Do you, so we have no idea?
No.
Okay. Cause that would be good to know.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions, Courtney? Otherwise, um, we'll take it back to staff. Okay, thank you. Does the applicant wish to add anything to the presentation? Have anything else to say? Okay, but you do need to come to the podium, so.
My name's Patrick Mater. I'm one of the, uh, members of the family. There are seven children in the family that currently are part of the trust. And I was looking at your, looks like a mission statement that you have on your agenda. And it just seems that this project, which has been very collaborative, really fits in with your goals here. And, um, different members of the family have different, uh, points of view because of family situations. But overall, they're, um, we're all in favor of this because we think it's as, um, council member Phol said, am I pronouncing it correctly? Said it's really, seems beneficial to both the city, our family and the watershed district. And, um, it's been farmed, uh, for 38 years. So it's been cropped, I should say. Before that, it was grazing land, it was wet grazing land. Also, um, just for your information, um, just on my drive up, I was listening to NPR and Minnesota lost more wetlands than any other state in the last five years. Uh, they lost 25,000 acres according to a study that was reported in the Mankeville Press. And it just seems like here's an opportunity in an urban, near urban area, um, Hennepin County, where with collaboration and, and, uh, support from everybody, that it could be a reality. So we appreciate the work Mr. Abel has done in the watershed district and look forward to doing more.
I have one question. Thank you. The original homestead where the house is sitting now.
Yes.
Uh, I think Dave, you mentioned the fact that that was planned on being left there. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is that, uh, occupied now? Is anybody living in there now?
It's, um, sporadic.
Sporadic?
Yes.
I know Stan comes back once in a while.
In other words, there are people who live there. There are people who have seasonal jobs and live there.
And, uh, the other question I have then is your plan then, as this property gets developed, is to, long-term, to, to leave that there and not do anything with that original homestead?
It depends on, if, if I can speak to that. It depends on how, um, we proceed. If, for example, one of the things that could happen is we could find a developer interested in both the wetlands and the subdivision.
Okay.
And then, then it gets to be his or her decision, that company's decision. So we really don't know what the long-term plan.
I guess where I'm going with that is when, and thinking out here, if, if this goes out and it's sold to the developer to build the, the number of homes that you're talking about, would that homestead be sold with the rest of the land at this point? Are you thinking that that would be sold?
I think it's safe to say it would.
With the rest of the land?
That's, that's the way we would.
Yeah.
And then maybe a family member would express interest in that lot. We don't know.
All right, thank you.
David, could you show us where exactly the homestead is on the map there? Okay, and what is that to the north?
It's the sheesh.
Okay, so that would be removed possibly, okay. And then, and this is more of a David question, so, um, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Otherwise, um, David, how would, so there's another homestead to the west, right there. How would they access their property? Because obviously, they would still need to access their property off County Road 110.
Right, um, they're, they're, I mean, what the county's gonna want to do is eliminate this access point. So that they, if, if the, uh, direction was for them to go north to Northview, then that, that again, that would be their access point. And/or if, if the plat was redesigned to connect down here to, to Windridge, that would be their access point as well. They always would have the option of building their own driveway to Northview. Um, I think highly unlikely given the grade and contour out there. But, um, they're, yeah, they're, they're, they're somewhat, if you say tied, tied to, to wherever the access point's gonna go, um, which I know is one of the concerns the Mater Family Trust has, has had. And I think certainly they, they're not to the point yet of act, you know, sitting down and talking yet, but, uh, you know, that's been a concern.
So the neighbors aren't aware of this yet? I mean, do they, are they aware of it?
We have spoken.
Okay, okay.
Because I think, sir, we'll need to say that's more preliminary plat.
Correct, correct. I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we haven't, obviously, we haven't sent out any hearings of such. I, you know, I, I myself have not spoken with them and I, as far as I knew, they had not talked to them yet.
So the county wouldn't allow that one single home to ma, keep their driveway?
Well, um. It, it, you know, the, the county did, we didn't specifically, uh, the county did not comment on the driveway. It's a very good question, um, as to whether they're gonna allow it. They potentially might because it is only one home. I mean, they likely could be there, but, um, I guess, you know, depending on, right now, that's a shared drive, it's somewhat shared.
Right.
It's on the line, so you, either way, they're gonna have to move, possibly move it and it's a new access point.
Okay.
It's a good, very good question.
But it's something that would have to be dealt with, yeah, okay.
I think, um, if I could address one thing. I think when they built the home, really just to be neighborly, we just allowed them to use that.
Yeah, but I'm sure there's some legal rights that they would have, even, you know, after a certain amount of time of using it, there's certain prescriptive easements, if you will. I mean, but Mr., we don't need to go into that tonight. I just was curious, so. But, uh, so, Mr. Abel, you're looking kind of for a nod of approval for the preliminary plat? And then also, um, what our recommendation would be in terms of the road?
Correct. Um, if you have anything else, any other concerns, questions, comments, recommendations for them to move forward, the, what the motion we're looking for is direct the applicants to include the changes outlined in the staff report if they were to move forward with the preliminary plat application. And, um, yes, I think it would be, um, helpful if council could weigh in on what your thoughts are if they were to go north to Northview, um, the likelihood of that becoming a paved, uh, surface.
Well, another question then, Mr., I'm not sure if the applicant or, or engineer or whatever. What is the grade, um, if you go back to the subdivision, you know, what is the grade between some of these lots? If you wanted to tie it into Windridge, is that even possible?
It, you're gonna have to redesign the plat.
Right.
You know, completely. It's possible, certainly possible, but you're, you're, it's back to the jawing board on this sketch. I mean, you're gonna have to reconfigure it and, um, a lot of it's, like they said, depending upon if, if at one time, the ki, idea was to keep the home site. But, uh, grade-wise, yeah, it's possible.
I'm just thinking it would be less costly then to go north and then south if you wanted it paved.
Either, either way, because of what the county said, you're gonna have to redo the plat.
I mean, no matter where you come in with access.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's fairly easy for them to head north. They have, you know, these two lots will get somewhat smaller. They might have to shift slightly, but down over, you know, coming this way, you know, two lots are getting smaller there as well. But, but now you've got, you're going to have to, these two lots are going to be, have access off Northview. We might not, we likely don't have enough frontage. There's, there's some, you know, we'd have to look at it, you know, as well. But yeah, you're right. It's, either way, it's going to have to be redone.
I mean, just assuming if it stays gravel, the residents, there's two residents on, on Northview right there that they may have something to say about this. They have an issue with it?
Had it, would have an issue with it?
No. I'm guessing.
With the road or?
Well, the increased traffic on that, and it's a dead ingravel road right now. So, I mean, until we get to that point, I just, I just don't want the applicants to spend a lot of money and then find out that, you know, plus that, you know, chunk of Northview would get pretty, pretty costly to upgrade that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's a, you know, total reconstruction, nine ton, you know, city, up to city.
That's why, why I was saying, if they did a road directly out to Windridge in between those two lots, maybe it would be less costly.
Well, I think that's what they're, that's what they need to know. Do they need to analyze what a nine-ton road from that point all the way to County Road 10 is going to be? And/or, you know, obviously, they'll look at both options, but is the council, are you looking to have it be improved or are you not? We've done it both ways in the past in the city. That's why I don't have an answer to the question. That's why I'm asking you.
And my opinion is if you can come off of 110, would make probably less costly for the applicants. And it would have less, it wouldn't affect the neighbors as much doing that. And hopefully, Hennepin County will let the one resident keep their driveway. I mean, if you look at the survey, basically, what they'd have to do is move the driveway a little bit to the east. You're still going to be able to use the access because the access is in the county right away. So I don't think they'd have to actually move the actual access, but you're just going to have to shift the driveway to the east.
You're saying have the access on 110? Because I thought the material said that the Department of Transportation says you can't because of the grade of the road there and it's a safety hazard, so therefore you have to come in on that other road.
Well, or, or down here, down here on Windridge Trail.
I think Mark and I are saying coming in down by Windridge, creating a four-way intersection there. And then going up, you could even create a second cul-de-sac, if you will, so that all the lots there are then accessed via, directly from County Road 110. I think it'll be less costly than trying to improve, because if you're going north, I don't know what that road is called. I'm sorry.
Northview.
Yeah, Northview. And, and then down again, that's really expensive. That's very expensive. And they're going to have to be putting in a road anyway. I mean, I think, yeah. I know it means redrawing a few things, but I think it could be done fairly easy. Obviously, if, if Hennepin County were to let them access it where it currently is, that would be the best solution, but, for them, but if that's not an option.
So it has to be done, redone either way.
Right. Anybody else want to weigh in?
What's the timeline on something like that? What are you looking at for timing? Is this like in the next couple of years, a year?
Go ahead.
No, we can, the way I understand, Mr. Abel, from your earlier presentation, the wetlands can proceed without that one. And the answer probably agree your concern.
What you might want to do though, you might want to get an approved preliminary plat because you wouldn't want to have a sketch plan approval, go ahead and do the wetlands, and then have something change. And let's say you don't do anything for several years and then maybe something changes. I think, I could be wrong, maybe we could ask our attorney. But I think you'd want to have a, at least a preliminary plan approval. Am I?
Well, if they, yeah, what I worked a lot with the, the family trust on this. The sketch plan, again, there's no approval from you as a council. You're not giving them land entitlement. This is non-binding feedback for them to decide if they want to move to that next step of preliminary plat.
Right.
There's large dollars required for someone to go to that preliminary plat stage in terms of engineering, surveying, design, construction plans. If they go to that next step and get preliminary plat approval, yes, then they have land rights, land entitlement to ten lots that they can take and sell to a potential developer. There is another step in that process of final plat. But we've had plenty of examples in Minatrista where they've gotten preliminary plat approval and sold that to a builder who saw it through to final plat.
Right.
That is correct. That's an option for them. But, so I'll let the family speak more to where they're at in that, that process. They're, they're aware of that, that process and what that might be. My inkling is they're not, they're indecisive as to whether or not they're willing to commit that investment to make that next step on their own.
Okay. I mean, from our perspective, they wouldn't have to.
No.
I'm just saying if they wanted to assure that they get something similar to this, that it would be in their best interest to get the preliminary plat approval.
Correct. I think that would be the, probably the goal.
Okay.
It would be working so that they would be kind of going hand in hand.
Okay.
So that the rules don't change.
Right.
After the, wetland is kind of the jewel.
Right.
And would want the rest to kind of stay there.
Okay.
As long as I talk.
Francis, can you come up, can you come up to the mic, please, and state your name so we can get it for the record, please?
I'm Francis. Francis Condon. I'm a Realtor and I'm working with the family trust. I just had a question that kind of begged, begged. If we came off of Windridge and came up and did some kind of a cul-de-sac, we could get most of the lots that way. And the city is, I think, kind of working toward the, that being blacktoped. Just in, as I look at how that could be redone, if maybe those two northeastern lots could be accessed off of Northview. Without, in, improving Northview all the way out, just in a matter of interest of saving some money and maybe not making as much road as is, would be necessary. I don't know if that's an idea that would maybe work in a preliminary plan. I'm just throwing that out there again, but.
Yeah, no, I, I wouldn't have a problem with the one, the two lots coming off of, off of Northview. But I think the main, the other eight of them, come on, try and come off of 110 with it. Like I say, I think it would save the family a lot of money in cost for, you know, redoing road. And to have two extra lots there is, is a big difference than ten, you know, the amount of traffic.
Going down Northview, yeah, I agree. Yeah. Is that?
Yeah, I think, I understand if, I can, we can talk after, but, yeah, anything else?
Well, steering away from the focus on the road for just a moment, I would just like to say, say that I'm very excited about this, the possibility of this development. It seems to fit in with our vision of Minatrista. You know, with those wetlands, the possibility of Halsted Bay, the, the health of that improving. I would have to think that that would make almost, if not all of the residents on Halsted Bay, pretty happy. And with the size of the lots being two-point-five to five acres and, and each of that, you know, having enough space between them and the way that they're positioned, you would think that every lot would have a view of the wetlands. I would think it would just be a very desirable place to purchase a home and live. And so.
I, I think the, the nice thing is, the more of this you do, if you do this, that property will never end up with three units an acre housing on it. You know, and we've got a lot of those in the city. And like I say, the more of those we can do, that, you know, basically sets in stone what that property's going to look like. You know, we'll end up with some big lots left in the city.
Is the entire, the entire acreage in a conservation easement, do you know? Or is just the wetlands?
Well, the wetlands will be protected on their own via the bank and then now they're established wetlands. But the, everything outside of it, the open space, yes, we, we put an easement, open space easement over the top of it. The city does.
Okay.
Yep. So not only do you have the, to Mark's point, the, the smaller lots that likely would be harder to develop in the future, but you have, everything to the north is either protected with an open space easement from us or protected via the wetland, which is not now.
Right. I think the council members should be aware and, correct me if I'm stating this incorrectly or if my understanding is incorrect. It's my understanding that with these cluster developments, they go on individual wells or nets so they would not be added on to the water users. Yeah, they're not in the musa, so, I mean, they wouldn't have city water, they wouldn't have city sewer either, so. Private septic and private well. Okay? Anything else then, otherwise?
Look, just, just real quickly, I think Matten said, but I'm another one of the brothers.
Can you come and say to the, because it's being taped and then people that are watching it can't hear you.
Okay. Well, that, that, the people that we've worked with at the city and, and certainly the people we worked at the Watershed District have been terrific to work with.
Oh, good.
Lots of trusts, lots of, they've been, they've been real great partners.
Good. It's good to hear. Thank you. All right. So I think you've got direction.
Yep.
Do you need anything else?
There is a suggested motion in your pass.
I didn't think you needed it with sketch plan.
What's that?
I didn't think we needed it with sketch plan.
We have done that.
Okay.
Again, it's not an approval. It's just, I'll, I'll read it again. Motion to direct the applicants to include the changes outlined in the staff report if they were to move forward to preliminary plat application.
Okay. Does that include what we discussed regarding the street?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion? I make a motion as stated, as stated. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made. Excuse me, what number is that?
Six A.
Six A, okay. Motion has been made to approve resolution number six A. As stated, any further questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you. So. Moving on. Our next item of business is selecting the engineering consultant for the water treatment plant.
Yes, Mayor and Council, before we begin, I would like to maybe have both, primarily, Mr. Beatty, restate for the record the information about how we are to proceed tonight since we are speaking at a public forum about non-public data. As members of the council do know, as for the audience benefit, the materials for the RFPs were given to council members last Wednesday. We had a council review for strategic planning. At the end of that Wednesday session, we distributed the materials and discussed this. But I would like to, on the record, have Mr. Beatty kind of talk about that.
Madam Mayor, council members, I did prepare a memo which is in your packet. And I think it reiterates some of the comments that I made at one of the special meetings last week. But as the city administrator says, just to go through it again. What we have tonight is consideration of the responses to a request for proposals. The names of the respondents, the six firms that responded, became public when those were received and opened on March 25th. The substance of the proposals, though, or the responses, are not public at this point and will not become public information until the process is completed, which the statute defines as selecting a responder and concluding a contract with that firm. So that's sometime in the future. We're tasked then tonight to talk about information that's not public in a public meeting. And that represents somewhat of a clash between the open meeting law and the Data Practices Act. And the statute resolves that apparent conflict by giving preference to the open meeting law. We cannot close the meeting tonight to discuss this matter simply because it's not public information. We have to conduct any discussion that the council wishes to have in public. In attempting to balance those two, somewhat awkward to try to do that. But what I think is the best strategy, as I've outlined in the memo, is to keep in mind the fact that although the pub, the information in the proposals is not public, anything you say tonight will be public. There's a video of the meeting, there is, there will be minutes. All of that becomes public. You are authorized to discuss matters which are not public in this context to the extent that you feel that is necessary to reach a decision. So you should feel comfortable having whatever discussion you think is necessary, you collectively think is necessary to reach a discuss, a decision without idle or frivolous discussion. In other words, be, be careful about what it is you say. And the suggested method of doing that, to try to attempt not to reveal information that, that is not yet public, is to refer to the proposers by letters. I think you have a memo from the city administrator which has given an alphabetic designation to each of the six proposers. And what we would suggest then is that as you discuss them, rather than saying firm X, Y, Z, that you refer to proposer A, B, C, and limit your comments that way.
Mr. Beatty, are we allowed to say dollar amounts?
Well, you can. Again, the statute says that you can discuss it to the degree that you find necessary to reach a decision. I guess at first, what I would suggest that you try is to the extent that money becomes a relevant factor in your discussion, you can refer to the fact that A is more expensive than B or vice versa, without going into the specific dollar amount.
Okay. All right. So you all should have this at your place. And it does list, it does list.
Don't say it.
No, I didn't. It does list the A, B, C, which, which companies are A, B, C, D, and E and F. I'm assuming you all had ample time to review these. I know it was a lot of reading and thank you for doing it because I know it was a lot. But what I would suggest is that we maybe name via A, B, C, D, or E the ones that, we'll start with Bob and go down the road. We'll just say the top three, or if you only have top two. If you could tell us which those are, and then we'll kind of narrow it down based on everybody's input. And then we can discuss the, maybe the top two or three that, that we've singled out. Does that make sense?
And I don't know if there's anything Mr. Hornby wants to address to the council before we start. I mean, you do have the recommendation as made by staff and engineers.
Right.
So we did, we did identify one of the six firms that we recommend as the one to go with. We also kind of eliminated two and talked about four of them. As Mr. Hornby put in his memo, they're all well-qualified. So you can't really go wrong with any of them, but, you know, for obviously different reasons, whether it's completion date or price or whatever criteria you are willing to, to discuss, we did identify one as kind of the standout one. um, we did identify one, um, as kind of the standout one as our recommendation. And that was kind of independently sought or concluded, um, by the members of the group. And I had, um, Mr. Peters and, uh, uh, Mr. Abel, Mr. Grim, myself, Mr. Hornby, and one other engineer from his firm all kind of come to that same conclusion, so.
Correct, thank you.
Is there anything you wanted to add to?
Uh, no, I was just gonna mention that the, the, uh, four out of five of us did, um, come to the same conclusion. I think we all had the same firms in the top four.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, for technical and non-technical staff to do that, I actually was a little surprised by that. Um, but I think in going through, it was, it, um, going through all the proposals, that all kind of came forward for all of us in one manner or another. All of the, um, reviews by staff were independent. We did come together to, um, do something similar to what you're doing now, is look at, um, what conclusions you came to, set up a matrix and a scoring chart. And that's what I provided in that memo that you had before you.
Well, I'm thrilled that we had this, that we had this many. I mean, that really shows that there's an interest, um, in doing some work for us, so that's great.
The, um, the thing that we did do too, and it's in the memo though, is that we did, um, send this out to national, regional, and local firms.
Right.
Uh, to try to provide that balance. And for reference, uh, the two firms that you have had previously work on this project are both considered regional firms.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions or comments from staff? But thank you for that clarification. Thank you. Um, so with that, um, anybody want to weigh in first? Mr. Christians?
Other than the fact of spending most of my weekend reading and going through packages, I did something, I don't know if it was appropriate to do or not, but I took it a step further. And I'm quite surprised, and I'm pleasantly surprised, I should say, that the top two, after going through the reading and doing some search beyond this packets that you gave us, uh, I came up, not knowing what the staff was recommending, I came up with, uh, number one and two being A and D.
Okay.
And I did not know what the staff had.
Okay, well, I, I think...
A and E?
A and D.
Are you in that order?
Okay, um...
Uh, no, uh...
Just, just, those are the top two?
A and D, top two are my top two are A and D.
Um...
And if you want to know the reasons, I'm more than happy to share that with you, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, well, we'll go through this and then, yeah, um, Ms. Mortensen?
Um, I did the same as Bob. And it was interesting reading. Uh, I did a spreadsheet and same thing, I came up with the top two of A and D as well. And, um, I could comment also, but they probably are very similar to everybody else's.
Okay. Mr. Vanderlinde?
Um, it's kind of interesting because with doing and some, like you say, reading and research and stuff, A and D is kind of where I was at too. It may differ between the, what the staff recommended on my top one, but that's the two that I had picked.
The top two, okay. Okay. Okay, and Ms. Thol?
Um... A and D are my top two. Um, I had C in the top three, but I eliminated them because they didn't, uh, focus as on much, they were, uh, less expensive, but they didn't focus as much on their, um, success rate on lack of change orders. And so my concern was, uh, they may have been lower, but they may have had more change orders, which then ultimately would end up in a similar cost.
Yep, okay. Well, um, I'll have to say, I came up with the top two as well, same ones, A and D. Um, for similar reasons, I'm sure that everybody else had, um, read through all of them thoroughly. And then the top ones that I had picked out, I read through them again and did some analysis and came up with A and D as the top two. So, I, I, that's amazing. That's amazing. Um, now we just have to pick the top one. Are there specific questions or comments that you'd like to make? Because we can't hire both of them. Both of them are equally, I mean, both of them are very, very well-qualified. And Mr. Hornby, can you tell us, um, A and D, these are, I can't remember now, regional?
Uh, both would be considered regional, both working the upper Midwest.
Okay. And, um, very little difference, I mean, minor difference in terms of cost?
The only really differentiating item with them, uh, probably is that, um, I'm gonna have to go back and look at my sheet shoot here.
Yeah.
Just, this is just my own personal review. One of them has, uh, a number of sub consultants and the other does not.
Right, um, I noticed the one had all in-house or mostly in-house. I think there was one, um, and which is, I, is a benefit, especially when you're on a time, um, schedule?
Although it also was not a requirement of the, uh, key, although they had to identify who they would be working with.
Yep, okay. So comments, Pam?
I did have one question. I'm so nervous about saying.
Yeah, I know.
D, um, Paul, I guess. Hunter's Crest, was that on the same timeline as the whole completion date?
Yes.
It was actually...
Their, their completion date didn't change, I used the later dates, um, in the memorandum. So, I think that they had that elevated tank coming in, uh, sooner than the water treatment.
I, I think both A and D had them coming in a little sooner. One was August and one was October.
Yep.
And both were completion dates within, um, fall of twenty sixteen. One was like December and one was...
Uh, want to say September or August?
Um, no, one was November, I think.
November and September, I think.
Okay. Okay, so, very, very close. Not far enough apart to make a difference, you know? Uh, one of the things I noticed is one of them did say or list as part of the scope of services was tours. Did anybody notice that?
I did.
And, uh, tours of similar facilities. I thought that was very, um, good. Uh, nobody else had that. And I really think, uh, for the decision-makers, it would really be good to see some other facilities if we have to be making these very large money decisions. So I thought that was very good. And I believe that was, um, Firm D that referenced that.
That's correct.
Yeah. I also liked their, um, approach, uh, to communications and stuff. That was a very, very good approach. If my memory serves me correctly, and there's six of them, so I'm trying to differentiate, but...
I noticed the communication in, uh, actually, A was very, a little, it seemed to be a little higher tech.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, communication was a big thing for me as well.
Now, keep in mind, good thing is, is once we get our communication expert on board, we'll have help communicating with the public. Um, okay, comments?
Both, both A and D, I found are extremely reputable, well-known.
Mm-hmm.
I had a better or a little more comfort zone with D. And the reason is because, from what I read, it sounds, I, I interpreted that their presence in the community of Minnesota was maybe a little stronger than, uh, than A.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, I think the presence, both being very reputable, the presence in Minnesota, I felt, was a little stronger than, uh, for D than what A was.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay. Anybody else, Mark?
Probably the, the only thing that really concerned me between A and D was their bidding timeline. Um, D is, they're gonna bid this in September. And if anybody's somewhat knowledgeable, construction, September's probably, September, October's probably the worst time you can bid a project.
When would the...
He was bidding in. Uh, they were bidding in, what was it, uh, it was later in the year. It was in like January is when they were, yeah, Jan, December, January. January, yeah.
Let's ask Mr. Hornby, um, and I can't recall, I, I apologize. When would construction start?
I have to go back and look.
Okay.
At the specific schedules, I've got them here, but I don't want to pull all the proposals, I'll look at them, but...
So, if that's a consideration, and we still want it completed by November, December of twenty sixteen, um, could they bid it later and start it later and still complete it? I guess, both are saying they're completing it though, that's the...
They're both completing around the same timeline.
Right.
And I think even if you bid it in the fall, um, you're still going through a process where you're, um, getting subcontractors and subcontractors, um, getting equipment approvals, getting shop drawings in and going through all that stuff so you can get, you know, getting, getting those kind of things out of the way, where you can, um, get equipment mobilized and you can start when the weather allows or even before the weather allows, if they wanted to start in February, January, depending on the season. That's a risk, we all know that's a risk here in Minnesota. Uh, but there also is a potential to get some of the work done in the fall. Primary foundations is one that you would, as a constructor, you would want to get in. If you wanted to work, uh, through the winter, you could get some of the fields going through the winter. Construction costs are generally higher, uh, because you have to heat masonry and concrete and those type of, of things. But I, I think the process would be is to try to get foundations in the ground, um, the fall. And then in the spring, you've got a good jump on the construction to get it completed by the timelines that you indicated.
I thought Firm D said that their start date would be late fall of fifteen.
I think I've got D as... I don't, D is November fifteen, if I'm reading right, is that so?
Yeah, I didn't know how specific I should be.
No, for start, construction in November of fifteen was the, yeah.
So then they wouldn't, they would be bidding it sooner than that then?
Right, they'd bid it in September.
September, yeah.
Like I say, that, they're both very good outfits.
Yeah.
Very well-known, it's just that really part of it stuck out, is, I mean...
Well, if...
You may end up paying a premium.
Well, if bidding was, if bidding was the issue, then you could ask Company D to bid it later.
Right. You could, but it's just, but in their proposal, they were proposing bidding in September. And that's, and I think there was a difference of, um, okay, well, um, D, I think, was gonna be trying to complete it like two months earlier than A, if I remember right.
Correct, it looks like, yeah, September thirtieth versus November thirtieth, so you have about two months, yeah.
So I mean, if the bidding is, is the que, is the issue, we could have them bid it later to get better pricing. Uh, you know, we're not, I'm not, we're, I don't think we need to split hairs over whether it's four weeks or five weeks. That isn't an issue. It's when it gets into that six, seven-month range, then I think that becomes an issue. But whether they finish it, complete it November, or whether they complete it December, I think we could live with either one, am I not? I mean, is that a fair statement?
It, it, like I say, it's just something that, when I read through it, it jumped out at me and I felt that it needed to be brought up there. Um, I mean, that's just normally, I'm sure you'd agree with me, is bidding something in the fall, it, it's a risk that you can end up with a...
Here's what I would say on, on that, if you would allow me to, is that, um, I think it really depends on the market. You know, we've seen it go both ways, where we've had a downturn in, um, or a lack of projects that were contractors. Some contractors, um, may have a need to have a fall bid, uh, and others won't. I think we're gonna know when we get closer to that date. Um, you're gonna see the, in their final plans, if you're gonna get a final cost estimate, it's gonna be on that timeline. What their thought is going to be, and we can also get a gauge, um, uh, on what the market is doing, whether that seems to be high or low. And I think we can see how that is trending and make a decision at that time to see if we want to bid it.
And, and we do have the capability, I mean, being there proposing to bid in September, we have the ability to say, no, we don't want to bid until December.
Correct. And you have the ability in your selection, the next step would be to, once you do make a selection, would be to start to negotiate that contract. That's one of the things we could talk about in those contract negotiations as well.
I don't think we want to say right now, we don't want it bid then, but I think we want to say, we want to be monitoring the indicators and so on, and then come September or maybe August, whatever, we can decide if we want to bid.
Correct, we have that flexibility.
Yeah.
We want the ability to decide that then, and not have it, you know, where they come back and say, no, it's, it's in here, we're gonna bid in September, and that's it. You know, you sign the contract.
Right, yeah.
And I think we make it known to them, uh, before the contract is signed, that we want flexibility in some of the scheduling based on the market.
Okay. All right. Well, it sounds like, um, the council has kind of come to the same decision as, as staff, um, that Firm D, if I'm, I might be paraphrasing, but I'm kind of hearing Firm D, Ms. Thol? Okay, is kind of the route we want to go. Uh, and it is interesting because, um, we all kind of came to our own conclusions and staff, four out of five, came to the same conclusion. So, I think we should move ahead here with, um, Firm D. So the next step, now we'll do a resolution, but the next step would be for, um, staff to work on a contract, is that right? And when would you bring, now would we have to see that contract, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, and you'd bring that back when?
I would like to bring it back at the next meeting.
I would like you to bring it back then too. That would be great. Thank you, Gary, sorry, we didn't ask you much. All right. Thank you. Um, he was here just in case we had questions, so that was great that he was here. Um, so, could I get a motion to approve, uh, Firm D as our firm to pursue a contract with for the, uh, water treatment facilities and the Kings Point Water Tower?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to, uh, to confirm or to pursue a contract with Firm D. Should I say their name at this time? No, okay. Um, for a contract as their proposal stated. Any further, staff, is that accurate? Okay, Mr. Hornby, is that...
I just had one, the only thing is I would, I would contact all the firms, not identifying any information about any, but I would talk to all of them tomorrow.
Okay, yes, you would want to say that we've made a selection, so...
One quick question now, Kings Point Water Tower, are we locked in on that? Is, is that for sure gonna happen? I mean, is it, or not, not Kings Point, excuse me, Hunter's Crest?
Hunter's Crest, yeah.
Hunter's Crest.
Yeah.
Um, I know that was kind of a question of, I mean, that's why it was bid as kind of an option.
I would suggest that in the contract negotiation, you have the opportunity to take that out of the contract if you select.
So they would, they would do the design work for it?
You could, you could go about it in any fashion that you would like.
Okay.
They provided the fees separately so that you could look, all of them provided the fees separately so that you could make that decision, either upon selection or as the contract goes forward.
Right.
And I can talk to them about making sure that they, in the contract, um, they realize that the, put in there, that in the flexibility of the contract, that the city can hold that portion of it.
Okay, and so let's just say we want it, um, yeah, we'll do that flexibility in the contract. But let's say we did say, okay, we want you to do the design work on it now, but then we get the bids back and it's more than we want to spend right now, can we put that portion of the, um, construction project on hold?
Certainly.
Okay, and because it was bid separately, there wouldn't be a problem, um, taking out those costs, right?
Even if it was included in the entire contract, the way generally the contracts are written is that the owner always has the right to withdraw a portion of the project.
Okay.
And so we make that clear.
Okay.
And sometimes we'll make it more clear than others by putting something as an alternate.
Because I know they were gonna do a lot of analysis and stuff, and so is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just so that we're not, because like I say, it kind of seemed like it was a future, more of a future tower than that we didn't really need it right away.
Right. Okay, any other questions?
Uh, just a comment, very brief. I would just like to say that I think this is a very exciting day. And, uh, this has been a topic for our city for a long time, a very sensitive topic. And, uh, as I was reading through these proposals and the potential start dates... And, uh, as I was reading through these proposals and the potential start dates, to think that we might actually be breaking ground this fall at some point for, uh, good water for our residents is very exciting.
It is. It is very exciting. And I'm, I'm thrilled that we're all on board. I'm very, very thrilled. Um, so with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much for all your diligent work this weekend. I know it was a lot of reading, so. Uh, with that, um, let's see. I have to get back to my agenda here. We move on to approving the labor negotiations with the Police Supervisors Union. Mr. Veroni?
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, you have before you the Item 6C and Item 6D. The approval of labor agreements with our two law enforcement, uh, unions. The first one is 6C and that is with our supervisors, which is our two sergeants and soon to be lieutenant sometime this calendar year. Those are the three positions that are included in this bargaining unit. In the memo, what I've done is I've gone through, um, all the changes that you see in the, uh, red line contract agreement that's included in the packet item as well. And I thought I would just kind of go through each of the items that were changed from the previous agreement that ended in December of 2014. As you know, we've been operating, as, as most labor contracts do, you operate under the old agreement until the new one is in place. And we hope to have you approve these both tonight separately. And then, uh, these, these changes would go into effect right, right, back to January first of this year. Um, so just to go through the, the items, um, cover page would be the first change. This is a three-year contract. It will begin on January one of this year, 2015, and end December thirty-first of 2017. Second item, under Article Three of Definitions, we adjusted the definition of the probationary status for the sergeants. The history related to this is, uh, we've had sergeants in our police department for many years, but in 2008, that was the first time they reorganized to become a union. Um, and since then, we've had the same two guys as our sergeants for the entire time. So when they were promoted to sergeant, they began at whatever rate was designated back in 2008 in the contract, and they've been in place ever since. This contract language is going to address future sergeants. Now, we may get future sergeants from the outside, or we may get future sergeants that are already in place here as, uh, Minutrista police officers. That's probably the likely scenario this year, promoting them from within. Um, and so we broke out the change in language that you see here. So if we did hire somebody from outside the organization, they would be brand new as a Minutrista police officer, obviously not brand new as a police officer, but as a Minutrista police officer. We would want to make sure that that person came here and had a twelve-month probation period. That's fairly typical for anybody being hired new. What we're saying is somebody that's being promoted from within, they've already gone through a twelve-month probation period as a new hire here when they became a police officer. This would just be a six-month probation period as a sergeant. And there's obviously, it's a huge process to go through to, um, do a promotional process to hire an officer as your next sergeant. Um, but we just want to make sure that we have, which wouldn't, wouldn't be an unwieldy amount of time for them to serve in a probationary period since they've already well acquainted with the city. They just haven't been able to, uh, serve the city as a sergeant. So that was why the change in the probationary period, depending on which way you hire. The other thing that you'll see on the pay program is that instead of having just one step, so the new sergeant that will get hired this year wouldn't be paid the exact same dollar amount as sergeants that have been in place since 2008 or probably, well, prior to that, but at least in the bargaining unit since 2008. So we put in a step rate for those sergeants. So there's a, two years in order to get to the top of the sergeant step rate. Just wanted to point that out as well. It was kind of a byproduct of changing this, uh, probationary period status. A couple of other changes that were made, and you'll see in both contracts. Um, the overtime provision, right now, um, you can carry over, uh, forty hour, the proposed contract is for allowing sergeants to be able to carry over forty hours of compensatory time. Currently, that is at twenty hours. They can only bank up to a, a total of forty hours. And at the end of the year, in any calendar year, what they're doing is having to either cash it out or use it and not being able to carry over twenty hours. Now we're allowing them, under this agreement, to carry over all forty hours.
And that's, isn't that in keeping with other contracts?
Yeah, the, uh, the contract that we negotiated last year with the Public Works folks, we have the forty hours as a carryover in that.
So we're trying to make things similar, as similar as possible.
Correct.
So, and they can still cash out?
They have that option, but a lot of times what we're hearing is they want the ability to have, when they only have twenty hours of vacation or comp time on that, it, it kind of limits their ability to take vacations in the first part of the year, so this allows them to do that. Um, one of the things that when we discussed, uh, some of the, the major changes in this, in this contract and in the police officers' contract, was to allow some more carryover of time. And we're doing that because we want them to take the time. We don't want them to, to just scroll it away. We want them to use it. These are tough jobs. We want to be able to take their vacations, use their vacation time, so, uh, these, these sort of incent them to do that a little bit more if they have some more time to be able to take those, those winter vacations potentially. Uh, the next article is Article fourteen, it's on insurance. This is basically a pass-through. Um, the thousand twenty-five dollars that the employer provides towards the cafeteria benefits would match what all other non-union employees are, are getting here at the city for 2015. And since it's a three-year contract, what we've done in the past number of years with multi-year contracts, whether it's in Public Works or P D, um, with these two unions is just call for a re-opener, which allows us to discuss that item only in future years, not knowing what the cost will be both to the employee and to the employer in future years. But for 2015, it'll be a thousand twenty-five. Uh, the uniform, um, we increased that dollar amount, uh, through our negotiations. They were at a hundred fifty dollars, or I'm sorry, we're at about, um, about ninety dollars a year, just slightly under ninety dollars a year, uh, depending on what, uh, the number of years of the contract were. And we've, uh, upped that to about, uh, four hundred fifty dollars total for the lifetime of the contract, which is equates to roughly a hundred fifty dollars per year. Um, we had a discussion, is generally these, these uniform allowances, they, they buy boots and the, this hasn't been raised, I think in ten or twelve years, this, uh, uniform allowance. Obviously, price of boots, especially high-quality boots that the police officers need to use, have gone up in price. But the other thing that got included into this was the ability for them to use any remaining dollars to purchase things such as flashlights, seatbelt cutters, car window braking tools, off-duty holsters, things of that nature, things that the city does not provide that they've essentially been buying on their own. It was kind of interesting, um, we got through our labor negotiations number, a couple of weeks ago. And I think, uh, not this past Sunday, but the one before, there was an article in the Star Tribune that talked about kind of the cost of being a new cop. And I've got a copy of that if anybody wants to see it. So it's kind of unique timing to see that, uh, they're talking about, other departments are talking about this. But we felt that was a fair amount for them to be able to purchase their boots, but also purchase their things. We sat in the labor negotiations, one of the officers pulled out about five things right out of his tool belt and off his, off his person that, uh, that he had to buy on his own. So we want them to be able to, to not have to pay out of pocket in order to protect the city. The sick leave in Article sixteen was, um, allows one unique thing that the supervisors have, uh, asked us before. It was actually in the previous contract and never got enacted. Uh, but it was the, allow them the ability to use, when they separate from the city, any revenue related to their severance, which is their portion of their unused sick leave, that they would, if they leave in good standing, that they would be able to put in what's called a post-employment healthcare, healthcare plan, savings plan. Uh, this is a revenue-neutral position for the city. We don't put in any city funds. They use, generally they would just get a check. Now they're just able to take the same money and put it in a post-employment health plan they can use once they've retired. There's no future gains that they get, uh, from this. Um, and like I said, it's kind of a revenue or a cost-neutral thing for the city. Article eighteen, again, that's about, uh, vacation. We're allowing them to carry over a hundred and twenty hours of unused vacation into the next calendar year. And they're currently at eighty, so it allows them to carry over an extra week. And then holidays, as, uh, some supervisors work ten-hour shifts. Eight hours of regular pay is a holiday, so they generally work ten-hour shifts. They were taking eight hours of holiday and two hours of their own vacation to cover that ten-hour day. And so now we're allowing that one holiday, oh, holidays, floating holiday to be ten hours at regular pay instead of just eight hours. Um, and then the, um, final item is probably the most important one, is the wages. What the supervisors are receiving are, if this contract is approved, is a three percent wage increase in 2015 over their 2014 wage. And then a two-point-seven-five wage increase for the next two years. So that would be in 2016 and in 2017. That's an eight-and-a-half percent total increase. And just to give you a little bit of historical, in the last three years, the supervisors have received a total of four percent increase. And so this next three-year period, uh, they would be getting an eight-and-a-half percent increase. And we did a lot of analysis to look at our neighboring communities and to see what they're paying, not only their, their chiefs, but also their lieutenants, their sergeants, and the patrol officers. And I have up on the screen the, um, information about the, um, the sergeants, I should say. It's a little tricky to do at times when you're collecting information because not only do you have to ask the question, you know, what do you pay this particular position, but you have to know essentially how many levels removed from the top there as far as chain of command. And so I've noted that on the two jurisdictions there, where a sergeant in both West Hennepin and the Dyna is the second-in-command. They don't have a lieutenant or a deputy chief position between them and the chief. I also put, just for your information, the population served for the, uh, communities that are more than one city, like West Hennepin or, and I call it overall miles just to, it was to remind myself mostly, um, and then South Lake. And so what I plugged in is the new rate for 2015 for Minutrista, and that's what we stacked up.
And those are the rates for 2015 for the other communities?
That's the 2015 rates for all those jurisdictions. And if you scroll it down to the next one, now you'll notice there's one additional item there, uh, city, uh, but you see South Lake Minnetaka, um, twice. And at their particular organization, they have a chief, and they have both a deputy chief and then a lieutenant and then sergeants. So as you can tell, even though their lake communities are close by, we differ greatly sometimes on how we operate. And as you can see, we don't have a sergeant there, but that sergeant, or I'm sorry, that lieutenant that will be hired in, uh, 2015 will be at that thirty-nine-eighty rate, and that will be filled in 2015. You can see where that, that rate, rates. And so you may say that these, uh, pay rates are a little aggressive, but essentially what we're doing is we're trying to get ourselves to be a tad more competitive to our neighboring communities that are very similar to us, kind of be more in the middle, as you will, on some of these, uh, pay rates. And you'll see that again when we talk about the, uh, police officers as well. We get to that next. And we, we can do that later, Brian, or David. That'll be in the next item.
Well, Mr. Veroni, isn't part of the intent with the, uh, percentage of increases to create a little more distance in the pay rate of police officers and, um, the, the additional responsibility of the lieutenants?
That is correct. And the other thing that we're seeing in our overall compensation is, um, Chief Falls, uh, he's one of the lower-paid chiefs in the, in the, this neck of the woods. And we really don't want him or any of the other command staff employees to, to leave for greener passers, I believe. South Lake currently has there, or is there in the process of recruiting a chief, if somebody filling in on an interim basis? And so the information that we have on that will probably be bringing back to you at, at a future date. But what, what essentially has happened over the last number of years with, uh, Chief Falls, uh, jumping into the chief's role from his lieutenant position a number of years ago, is we kind of have some paper compression. So we've got Chief Falls' salary kind of pushing down all the other salaries. So it's really not, not anybody's fault, but other than the fact of the circumstances that we have, that our lieutenant position, even though it, we haven't had one for a while, we've been carrying the position and showing what it would pay. And between that, the sergeants and the police officers, there, there's not a huge gap between the top patrol and the chief position. There's a spread or a percentage that typically shows up in, in, um, municipalities, and we're not quite there. Ours, our tops are a little further closer to the officers and it, and it's been compressing not only the sergeants, but the lieutenant pay. And so what we're trying to do is get ourselves to be more competitive with our neighboring cities.
One of the things that the Personnel Committee talked about is we have some really good employees right now, including our chief, of course. And, um, we want to make sure that we retain our good employees because it is costly to, um, replace them. And we don't want to lose them. So that was the other reason to, to look at our pay. And as you can see, it's pretty competitive with other communities in this area. Mister-
I'll open up to any questions if anybody might have any.
I have one question on the uniforms on, uh, Article fifteen. It's a little confusing. It says each employee shall be allocated up to one hundred seventy-five dollars and that's scratched out. Was that the old contract?
Yes.
So that was per year?
Nope, that was a total.
Total for?
A two-year contract.
A two-year contract.
Correct. So that's why it says roughly ninety dollars, eighty-five, ninety dollars, that range.
And now it's one fifty per year?
Now it's one fifty per year. And what we've allowed the, the both, the officers you'll see in the next contract and the, um, lieutenant, soon-to-be lieutenant and sergeant says, they get that four fifty. They can spend it any way they want. They can spend it any year they want, but once they've used up four fifty, they're out. So if they use it all the first year, they gotta figure out what they're gonna do in the next two years for their uniform allowance things. It's all gonna be on them. So it doesn't really matter to us when they use the money. They're probably gonna stay here. Yeah, there's always that risk if they leave that they might walk within this pair of boots, but since I've been here, I think we have one person leave and we'd like to keep it that way, so.
So currently, Mike, today, uh, in addition to Chief Falls, there's two sergeants?
There are two sergeants, yes.
Currently today. And the plan is, within this next year, to add another sergeant, is that?
Well, eventually, you know, the first thing that we'll do is we'll do a promotional process, and that was approved in the budget as a mid-year hire for lieutenant. And so our thinking is right now, we've got two qualified sergeants. We'll let them compete for lieutenant position.
Okay.
One will get it, one won't. The other will remain as a sergeant, and then we'll have a sergeant vacancy. And then we'll use our officers that are currently here. I think we have eight officers, all very good. They all have different strengths and weaknesses. We'll do a promotional process to fill the sergeant position from our officers. And eventually what we'll do is we'll be coming back to you to fill back the officer position. So everybody will ratchet up, a couple of people will ratchet up and then we'll fill back the-
So basically currently there's no lieutenant, so there'll be a lieutenant too.
Right.
So that's really the only change, or that?
That's correct. Yep.
The number isn't, is, doesn't change, it's just that the title changed.
You increase the number of the head count in that department with the approval of that lieutenant position for this calendar year, so.
So overall, one, one more than we currently have, yeah.
And we're doing it mid-year, so you're actually paying for half a year. Now next year, you'll have to pay for the full year, but this year it's only costing us half that.
And it's really just getting the F Ts back to what, 2011 level? With the lieutenant, was there an eleven, correct?
Yep. When Dave Cold left to go to Champlin, we never filled back that head count, so this department has been running one less FT than they were four years ago. So now we're going back to the staffing level that we were at when I got here in 2009.
I'm trying to interpret this one section here, and I, I moved forward on it. It was on page ten pertaining to holidays.
That is a little confusing. Yeah, they, they were getting paid eight hours, but their shift is ten hours. So when they would get their paycheck, in order to get the same paycheck, they would have to take two hours of vacation time in order to make up, in order to get the ten hours.
On the floating holiday.
And, and so what we're saying is we're just gonna pay them because they would have to serve a ten-hour shift. So we're just going to pay them a ten-hour shift. We're gonna pay them ten hours for their floating holiday. It's just one, one, one year.
City hall staff, we work essentially eight hours shifts. We get eight hours- We get eight hours of paid holiday time when we have a holiday.
Okay, I'm also reading here Article nineteen, "All full-time employees should be entitled to observe the following holidays and should be compensated at their regular pay."
Right.
So they are not being paid extra for holidays?
They get paid their holiday pay, which is the same as their regular pay.
Yeah.
But what they're getting right now on the floating holiday is they only get paid for eight hours because the holidays are eight hours on the floating.
And that'll be ten?
That'll be ten.
Okay, okay.
And how many floating holidays? There's just one. There's just one.
That's just the one.
Right, so it's just two hours?
Two hours in the entire year.
For, for three employees.
That's amazing. I never get my employees to work for a regular time on holiday.
I, I think, if I may interject, I think what you're referring to, Councilmember Christians, is if they work a holiday, they would be entitled to time and a half.
Okay, thank you.
What you're referring to is if they don't work the holiday, then they just get that straight time pay if they're not physically here.
So we're talking about the holiday pay, which is straight time pay, but as?
Time and a half on, okay.
If they're working, yeah, then they get, yeah.
I was gonna say.
But if they're working a holiday, they're getting a ten hour shift.
Yeah, okay.
I know, it's, it sounds confusing.
Oh, it's a little confusing. I got it now.
Yeah. All right, yeah, good questions. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Personnel Committee's recommendation of executing the proposed labor agreement with LELS Local Number Three Forty-Three for a period of three years, starting January one, twenty fifteen, through December thirty-first, twenty seventeen. And this would be, they would get retroactive pay through, from, starting January one of this year.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Then we have another one.
Yep, the final one. It should take a little less time to explain because some of the items that we negotiated with both police labor unions are a little, are similar in nature. And so I will go through that. So we're now talking about the police officers. Again, we're asking for an approval on a three-year contract that would begin January one of this past, of this year, twenty fifteen, and go through December thirty-first of twenty seventeen. And I'll go through the items in order as they appear in the red line. The first one is Article thirteen on insurance. Again, this is a pass-through, as I mentioned, when we're talking about the supervisors. The police officers would get a thousand twenty-five dollars per employee, per month under the Cafeteria Benefit Plan. And then there would be a reopen in both twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen when those amounts, when those numbers become available for us. Article fourteen on uniforms, again, the same dollar amount. They were at the roughly ninety, eighty-five, ninety dollars a year in the last contract, and we're increasing that for a three-year contract to the same amount as the supervisors. So a four hundred fifty dollar total over the three years, averaging a hundred fifty. Again, the remainder of this stuff could be used for those items that I mentioned earlier that, that they wear on their belts. Vacations accrue. Again, they would be allowed a maximum of a hundred twenty hours of unused vacation into the succeeding year. Currently, that's at eighty. Again, this is the exact same vacation language as the supervisors. Again, the same thing would be for that holiday when they, if they have to work a floating holiday, they would get ten hours instead of eight hours of regular pay for that holiday. And then for the wages, I think if you want to queue that up again, we've got four minutes and we get in, we get a break.
Okay.
Might have to break after this, so. The officers are getting a two and a half percent wage increase in twenty fifteen over twenty fourteen. And then both a two percent wage increase for the next two years, so a total of six point five. So two and a half, two and two. And then the other addition to the program is the addition of additional steps. You could call this longevity if you would like. But what we would like to do is add, starting in twenty seventeen, which would be the final year of this contract, a one percent increase if you've been a police officer for ten years, concurrent years with the city. And then an additional one percent once you hit fifteen years of service with the city. And as you can see, I have the police officer pay rates up on the overhead. And it might be a little hard to read on the bottom, but we, both South Lake and Orono have the first column where it says hourly annual, the South Lake, thirty-four nineteen, then thirty-six ninety-three. The first one is their top patrol rates of all contracts. And on the right, for the bottom four cities, it's the same number, but for the top two, both South Lake and Orono, you have a, essentially a longevity increase. South Lake's is two percent after four years, four percent after eight years, six percent after twelve years, and eight percent after sixteen years. And then Orono is the same, similar. So it's three, five, seven, and nine percent for, I think it's four, six, ten, and fourteen. We're talking one percent, one percent in ten and fifteen years. So that's, that's what we proposed for and agreed to with our union on that. So that, so it's a little deceiving when you say, what's your top patrol if you ask South Lake or Orono? You have to ask them, you know, what do you, do you have a longevity pay and what is it, so.
You have two more minutes.
Trying to figure out which, where to stop here, that's why I paused.
Do you want to stop now and then we'll come back?
Yep, I think we will, so I'm not gonna make it, so.
Yeah, let's take a quick break. Unfortunately, we have to. And then we'll come back in about three minutes or four and finish up. Ready to proceed.
All right, thank you, Mayor, once again.
Once again.
I was just trying to finish up on the police officer contract, talking about their wages. New and for the wages for the police officers are adding two additional levels, a one percent increase after ten years of continual service, which would be level six, and then another one percent increase after fifteen years of service, which would be level seven. I mentioned a little earlier before we took our break about how some of our neighboring cities have, I would say probably much more extravagant level longevity increases that go anywhere between nine or nine and eight percent after a number of years. So I think this is fairly doable. Again, as I mentioned, it's, it's something that allows our finance people to be able to budget for and prepare for as we move forward. And I guess that kind of begs the question of, well, how old is our police staff? We actually have a fairly young force. I won't do this by age, but just to talk about years of service. I did a little math on this based on today, month of April. We average slightly under nine years of service per our eight officers. So, you know, we do, we have a few people. We have three of them that are at ten years and above right now, but five of them are below that right now. And so they're obviously, they're looking at these and requested these additional levels for the future, which tells me they want to be here. And so we were able to negotiate some increases that we felt were acceptable to both sides. Believe me, they were a little higher than this on their initial ask, and so I think these are the ones that we agreed to. There's one other item under wages. Why it shows up under wages, I don't know, but it has to do with comp time. Again, we increased their carryover to forty hours, which was twenty hours. And that's where it shows up in their contract. So with that, I'll stand for any questions on this overall contract for the police officers, if you have any.
Any questions? Comments? Otherwise, I'm looking to approve Resolution fifty-eight dash fifteen, approving the labor agreement with LELS Local Number One Sixteen for twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen. The timing would be the same. January one through, of twenty fifteen through December thirty-one, twenty seventeen, with pay being retroactive to January one.
So moved.
Okay, motion has been made. Is there a second?
I second it.
Motion has seconded. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
I'd just like to mention a thank you to both Mayor Whalen and Councilmember Thol. They, those two along with myself and Mr. Grimm kind of comprised the Personnel Committee. We had some really good discussions with our, our unions. They both have really good union stewards and that represent them from the staff standpoint. They also have some very good business agents through LELS. And so I, I know that they appreciate these increases. You know, they're seeing the big picture. They really like working here. We were able to come up with something that worked for both labor management and this, and so I think it was very successful labor negotiation. Probably took a little longer than it should for a number of different reasons, but that's okay. What comes, what depends, what really dictates the success of this is what you come up with. So I think we came up with some good agreements for, for both sides.
Good. Okay, then. That concludes our business items. So we move on to our administrative reports, council reports. One thing I'd like to suggest that we do is, we always, on our agenda items, this would be for future meetings, we always have persons to be heard, and then we have special presentations. I'd like to switch those two around and have our special presentations first. And then if there is anybody under persons to be heard, have them after that. Typically, our special, not typically, but always, our special presentations are people that have signed up ahead of time. They're given, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes, and, and they're here and on the agenda. So it just makes for a nice, a little bit nicer meeting when you can have those people come first, then your persons to be heard, and then all your business items. So that's one of the recommendations or changes I'd like to recommend that we do in the future.
I agree with that. I think it's respectful to those people who have planned ahead.
Right, okay.
I agree as well.
Okay, let's see. I will be attending the mayor's, what is it called? Forum, whatever.
It's the Spring Mayor's Conference.
Yeah, the annual Spring Mayor's Conference. It will be held the weekend of April twenty-fourth and in White Bear Lake. So I'll be going to that and networking and getting ideas from other cities around the area. Tomorrow, I will be meeting with the Homeowners Association, and I'll also be at the Northwest League on Wednesday. And I also had an opportunity to meet with some neighbors from the Red Oak golf course now, now development neighborhood, and they'll be coming, the second meeting in May. So I'll talk to staff about that. And with that, oh, also the Gillespie Center, they will be here, and I'll confirm this with them again. But they will be here next meeting doing a report. And then they're trying to schedule a meeting for two representatives from each community that participates in funding them. So it'd be Mounds Spring Park and Minatrista, and they're trying to set up that meeting for April thirtieth. So I will be at that meeting, and we'll see if Mr. Grimm or Mr. Veroni or somebody else would like to join me. That's all I have right now.
As I mentioned earlier in the meeting, it was my turn to sit in on the Planning Commission meeting. So I did that at the last meeting, and then the Parks Commission will be meeting in April.
Pioneer Ser Creek, we did turn in our survey. Thank you, David. And the next meeting is on the sixteenth, when all the surveys will have been, they were due, I think, on the eighth. And they will be combining all of them and determining what we're gonna be doing in the near future. Spirit of the Lakes, I went to, they've now done subcommittees, and they have a marketing group. Really fun, lots of energy, lots of social networking things. And there's another meeting coming up on Wednesday, so I'm gonna try to make as many of those meetings as I possibly can. And speaking of Spirit of the Lakes, I'd like to make a motion that we go forward with participating again in the event. Last year, we supported them with a thousand dollars. And participation in the parade and so forth. And we can talk about that on a day that's not as long. And, but if we could get that check processed. So you made a motion, then I need a second.
Second it.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Now you can finish.
Okay, and then I will continue to work with them, and then I'll get you updated on all the details.
So then I'm gonna call a question. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So staff will send the organization a thousand dollars so that we can participate.
Counsel member?
Is that going to Pete now, or is that still going to John and Kristen?
I think it's going to probably John and Kristen still, so. It's on the form. Pam, will you get them the form, the information?
I have a meeting with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, we won't have the check ready tomorrow.
You won't have the check ready?
No.
Staff's not here right now.
And I have one other question, and this is just follow-up. Is it okay to bring this up now? To our meetings, our tour last week, when we were in the Kings Point Water Tower, there was a big pipe up at the top that we talked about changing where the sediment. And we were gonna talk about getting maybe a cost to see if that's something we could pursue now to maybe help that area with Hunter's Crest. Is that something we're looking at?
I think so. I think we'll have Mr. Hornby and Mr. Peters work on that and bring something back to council. At least you'll know what it costs if you want to go forward weekend.
Can you bring that back on the next meeting, April twentieth?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Thank you for reminding us.
And do we know the date of the parade?
July twenty-first, July twenty-second, or July twenty, what does that say?
It's that weekend. Okay, I think, yeah, it's seventy-eight, seventy-nine, somewhere there.
Okay, okay.
That's Saturday, third Saturday in July.
Third Saturday, okay. Okay. And Mr. Christians?
I, not, no, not right now. I will with the next one. Right now, I don't. Thank you.
Are you gonna be able to attend the fire board meeting?
On the?
I think it's the twenty-third.
Yeah, so I'm gonna be out of town on the twenty-second, but the twenty-third, I'm okay.
Okay. I, I will not be able to attend that meeting, and I think they said they were talking about possibly having a couple meetings. I'm not sure if that ever?
I haven't heard back from Chief Peterson on that. I know what you're talking about, but I think right now what they have is the twenty-third. I can make it, and I sound like?
Yeah, I just, I just need confirmation on that because I will be out on the twenty-second, so.
Okay.
But I'll be back the twenty-third.
Okay.
So I just need to get a confirmation if that's still on for the date.
I believe so. And I think what Mayor Whalen is referring to is that there's so many people involved in this, they may bust this out into two sets instead of just one. So I haven't heard that they have, but I think there's not only per request, but I think there's been some others, so we'll find out.
Okay. With that, we have staff's report. Mr. Abel?
Throw you a little bit of a curveball. David's gonna go first, but there's two other people that are gonna speak, so.
Okay.
We'll be quick.
All right.
I have two items. One, there is a free training opportunity. WSB is hosting a training session on what communities need to know about the upcoming round of comprehensive plan updates. The course will cover required components, legal aspects, the role of the Metropolitan Council, community engagement, how to implement your plan and how to get started. This is, again, is free. They're holding it on Friday, April twenty-fourth, from nine to noon at their office in Minneapolis. Myself and Nick Olson, the associate planner, will certainly be attending. Wondering if anybody from council is interested in attending. If so, let me know. I can register you to go to that.
I will be at the mayor's conference.
Okay.
On the twenty-fourth, yeah.
I don't know if I'm in town or not.
Depends on work.
Okay.
I'll have to let you know.
Okay. Let, let me know if you're interested, and I can register for you. Again, it's April twenty-fourth, nine to noon. The second item I have there, just to bring to the whole council's attention, I know Councilmember Morris has been contacted from residents about the situation up on, residents up on Susan Lane, just north west of Little Long Lake. We've had over the past month and a half about four or five inquiries from neighbors up there with concern to what type of use one of the homes is being used as up there. There was some, I guess you could say rumors going around as of a month ago as to what it was. So staff has looked into it. We sent a community service officer up there, got some contact information. What we know is it's being used as what's called a sober house. There are seven individuals who live in the home with one employee that is on site with them. This is what they refer to as kind of the last stage of treatment. They've already gone to their twenty-eight, thirty-day treatment facility, and this is, this is another step for individuals to take in that process. We reached out to the contacts and people that, the information we got, the people that run the facility, we reached out to them to get some more information from them. And they had an attorney that was representing. and they had an attorney that was representing them call us. So we referred Ron to that that attorney, so the two attorneys could talk. Ron, if you can give just a brief update as to what that conversation entailed. I guess what I will say on our end and Ron's end is we're still investigating the situation. We don't really have, we're telling you what we know to date, and we don't have concrete solutions or options for you to consider. And what I can say too is to date, we have not received official complaint from any of the residents. It's been inquiries asking what's going on, how is this an allowable use, can they do that? Those are questions we're still trying to answer, but like I said, to date, there has not been any formal complaint made or as far as I know, problem or issue with the situation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ron.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, one of the issues that David had raised with the residents was whether they were a state-licensed facility, and that's significant because in the state statute, which gives the cities the authority to create zoning ordinances, there are a couple of uses that are carved out as mandatory required single-family uses. State-licensed facilities, which covers a number of things of up to six people, are one of the uses. In other words, you can't zone out as a permitted single-family use. Same thing with daycare is up to twelve. And so the first line of inquiry was, do you fit within that exception? And the attorney was clear to say, no, that they're not a state-licensed facility, and of course, they have more than the requisite six. So we had not a long conversation. It's clear that he's been involved with a number of these things for a while. I think he's aware of the fact that seven unrelated individuals living in a single-family house, at least on its face, does not meet the city's zoning ordinance for a single family. What he told me was that in other cases, that the way they proceed is to seek what's called reasonable accommodation under two federal statutes, the Fair Housing Act and the Americans with Disabilities Act. Apparently, that's done through a variance process, which he said they were considering doing. That's pretty much all of the conversation that I had with him. I'm aware of those statutes. I've never dealt with a reasonable accommodation under either one of those. I'm in the process of reviewing that, and staff really hasn't had a chance to talk about it either. So I think the purpose of this was simply to tell you as much as we know, but to acknowledge that we don't have a lot of the details at this point.
Okay, thank you, just so you're aware of it in case you get a call or an inquiry. Yep, any?
Anything else, David? Okay, Brian? I'll let you go next.
I'll get to go next. Um, yeah, Madam Mayor and Council, the one thing I wanted to update on from the meeting on in March, I guess our last meeting or the second meeting in March, was we talked, we had the discussion on the financing and the water treatment, and we talked about the PFA and such. And the one follow-up when I did talk with Becky Sabey at the Minnesota PFA is that the funds would actually be available in fall of two thousand and fifteen, sixteen. I guess what, maybe some of the confusion came in is, you know, their award is for two thousand and sixteen, but they're they're on a July first, fifteen to June thirtieth, sixteen fiscal or calendar year, so that basically they, you know, we gotta get on there and meet the deadline by May first, you know, do that paperwork, and then there's a June fifth deadline. But if we get on the list and get approved, then the final approval would be in September, we'd be able to tap into funds by fall of fifteen or, you know, September, October, so that would mean.
So this fall?
Yeah, this fall, correct. Yeah, I guess long story short, so. But so that helps, I think, with, you know, last time we talked about, you know, whether there's any temporary or bridge funding or, you know, that we would need to do if the funds weren't available this summer of two thousand and sixteen, while it sounds like they're available, you know, sooner than we thought, based on, as long as obviously we get approved, you know, application, and we get approved, et cetera, so.
Well, what was the March thirty-first deadline, then?
That, maybe, I don't know if Paul can speak to that. I think that's for the.
That was for the actual, you know, you have to have all your approvals in place for that funding year. And that's what, that's what the, that's what the schedule was for them for the previous.
For fifteen.
For fifteen, yeah, yeah, basically.
To have all approvals in place by that time for their funding.
'Cause we would have almost been a late project in fifteen under the old way. Now we'll be an early project as long as we get approved for the twenty fifteen slash twenty, you know, what they call their twenty sixteen award year, but it's really fall of fifteen already, so, or late fall, or so. I thought that was good news, so.
So I believe Mr. Hornby will be discussing that with approved engineering firm.
Correct, yeah.
He has that discussion that the May one is a deadline.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Hornby's assured me that either the new firm will do that when they're, if they're approved on April twentieth, or WSB. Some, we'll get the application in one way or another.
We'll give it in one way or another.
Yeah, so.
Okay, all right. And then at some point in time, you're gonna bring back all of our financing options, and I assume.
Yeah, we'll go through that again as far as.
We may not need them, but we still wanna look at everything, because I know there were some restrictions with the PFA loan. You can't prepay it. It can only be used for maybe even only a certain portion of the project. I mean, so there's some other things that we'll have to be looking at.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, and then I'll end with one final update, and I've I've talked about this with different council members and mayor at different times over the last number of weeks, but I'll bring it up formally tonight. One of the things that I would like to do is to initiate a Monday morning telephone call with each of the council members on packet Monday, or council meeting Monday. So we'll hopefully be sending out the packets on Thursday. We've had a number of things not quite happen to get them out on Thursday, but it's still our goal to get them out Thursday. If they don't, they go out Friday. So we'll have your packets to you on Thursday or Friday. You have the weekend to review them. What I would like to do is to figure out what time works for your general schedules, and may vary, but hopefully we can set a standard time where, you know, I may call Mr. Vanulenney at nine, I may call Ms. Mortson at nine-thirty, whatever works. I'd like to work that out with you so we can have a one-on-one discussion on the phone about what's in the packet. Do you have any questions? I just wanna do a touch-in with each of you. It's kinda informally happening for the most part. I have a set meeting with the mayor every other week, but, you know, so it'll be up to her if she wants to talk again on Monday on council meeting days, but generally, we do, so. But I would like to establish that with all the council members, so I'll be calling all of you or emailing all of you and asking you to give me your your time and preferred time on a, like today. I guess the next one we would do would be April twentieth, two weeks from today, so. And I don't know if anybody has any objections, maybe you don't wanna talk to me, but I'm just, I'm just offering that up as an opportunity. If you have a chance to let me know what you think about what's gonna go on at the, at the council meeting tonight, or have any questions about what's in the packet, I would be more than happy to to set that up with you.
I think it's a great idea. Appreciate it. That's been kind of a tough thing in the past to try and get questions answered on Monday mornings.
Yeah, I have no problem doing that, so.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great. I'm all in.
Okay, good.
Awesome.
Good.
So I'll work with each of you to try to, hopefully you won't all want the same time, but we'll figure it out, so we'll sort this, we'll sort this out, so. I think that's all we have.
That's it, huh? Well, with that, then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes. Thank you very much. Good meeting, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.